Jason Mice?
No.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, April 8, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, in order of housekeeping, anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, we kindly ask that you fill out the speaker request form, and we'll get you on, give that speaker request form to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, who will get them to me and will get you on at the appropriate time. And we would ask those folks who have been asked to speak to try to limit their report, their remarks to three minutes or less. With that out of the way, I'd ask city clerk Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finoukhan.
Here.
Stupija.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you very much. Jeff, if you'd put that picture up on the screen, please, and for the benefit of our audience. There we go. Last week, at the age of eighty-five, a great lady passed away. This is Avril Schreiber, who was the first administrator at Barb City Manor, which, coincidentally, will be celebrating its fortieth anniversary at a reception tomorrow and events all this week. Avril was a caring, compassionate, really a fun lady to be around, and we're going to miss her. Arrangements are pending, and those arrangements are being handled by the Anderson Funeral As we remember Avril, I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We, first of all, have to approve tonight's agenda. Copies of our agenda are available on the table in the foyer. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Finoukhan, seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion, roll call.
Finoukhan.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko. Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as written. Prior to moving into public participation, again, for the benefit of those who were not in the room at the start of our committee of the hall meeting, Alderman Verbic from our sixth ward, who is absent, obviously, tonight, is on assignment by the university and out of town, and he asked for permission to be absent for tonight's meeting. Okay, let's move along. Item D, public participation. One person has desired a, wished to speak to an item not on the agenda, and that's Dwayne Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be back. I had a little accident on the ice-covered snow sidewalks. I did a Dorothy Hamer imitation. I did a double axle with a full twist. I believe if the Olympic Committee would have been there, I got a ten, except for the landing. That was ugly. But I'm recovering. At the March 13, 2017 city council meeting, the proposed medical marijuana dispensary at 650 Peace Road to be operated by Justice Groan and represented by Jamil Taylor was approved by eight to one, eight to zero vote. The state hasn't granted a license yet. Now, the Sycamore Planning Commission has approved a dispensary at 1985 Gateway Drive in Sycamore. The state only allows one license in each county. Please urge the state to grant us a license before Sycamore takes another tax-producing business away from us. Let's get a license as soon as the state reopens the application period. Dan Lynn, executive director of the Illinois Chapter of the National Organization to Reform Marijuana Laws, said last week that he expects any further dispensary decisions to be held until the state approves recreational marijuana use for adults. Legal marijuana sales topped one hundred and thirty-six million last year in Illinois. A state senate committee voted unanimously to advance a bill that would prevent state banking regulators from punishing banks or credit unions that do business with states' medical marijuana industry. According to a November 2017 listing, marijuana was legal in some form in at least thirty-one states. Illinois legalized marijuana for treatment of certain medical conditions under a pilot program that is set to expire this year. And state lawmakers are expected to vote later this season on whether to make that pilot program permanent and whether to legalize marijuana for adult recreational use. There is a, there is a article in the May issue of Consumer Reports. It is very informative. It discusses the benefits and risks of CBD. More than three-quarters of U.S. adults favor legalizing the medical use of marijuana, according to a separate national representative. Two thousand eighteen Consumer Reports survey of more than a thousand U.S. adults and half support legalizing recreational use of marijuana. I called our state senator today, Dave Seiverson. He wasn't in his office, and I called our state representative, and there was no answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Thank you, Dwayne. We move along now to presentations. Our first one is a proclamation, and I'd like to read that. This is for Earth Day, April 22, 2019. I, Jerry Smith, mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22, 2019, as Earth Day throughout DeKalb, and encourage all of its citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote environmental and climate literacy. I'd like to present this to our assistant public works director, Brian Favor. Brian, if you'd come up and accept this. Then I understand I'm going to be presenting another proclamation, so just stay right up here, if you would. Thank you. Just stay right there, if you would. I'm gonna move number three real quickly, and that's Arbor Day, which is going to be celebrated on April 26, 2019. I, Jerry Smith, mayor of the city of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim April 26 as Arbor Day in the city of DeKalb, and call upon all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Arbor Day, April 26, 2019. I'm gonna present this certificate also to our assistant public works director, Brian Favor. Thank you. Okay? Thank you. Our other proclamation this evening is for Administrative Professionals Day, and this will be forwarded to our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, who will distribute it to several appropriate parties throughout the community. I, Jerry Smith, mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim that April 24, 2019, be known as Administrative Professionals Day, saluting all the amazing administrative professionals who positively contribute to offices within this community, as well as dedicate ourselves and themselves to the administrative profession. So those are three proclamations that we have for this evening. We do have one other presentation, and that is from our program director of Family Service Agency, Erin Tamms, who will present the FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report. Erin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Again, thank you to the city of DeKalb. We are very gracious and very thankful for the support that the city has provided us again through the Human Services Grant. That award has really helped us tremendously with our senior services program and providing services to many individuals at our Club 55 DeKalb site. This past year, 2018, we had a lot going on, and we're gonna continue doing many of that this next year in 2019, and as we continue on into the next years coming forward. We have welcomed many individuals through the doors there at Club 55 on DeKalb, in DeKalb on Grove Street, for many, many years, and we look forward to continuing there for many more. Each individual that has come through that door has impacted us in so many different ways, just as we have impacted them. A 2008 study shows that senior centers, like the DeKalb Club 55, has activity participation is essential to the quality of life, has important life benefits such as reducing rates of depression, reducing global cognitive decline, and enhancing social connectedness. That is very evident at our club, as many individuals come for very simple things. It might just come to watch TV and socialize with others, 'cause they don't wanna look at their own four walls. They wanna get out. Or it might be just coming to play with, come play cards, Pinochle Bridge, Euclid, and cribbage. I had to remember that one. That was a little bit harder for me to remember. But there's always different things going on. And the role of the senior centers will continue to expand and have an increasing impact on the structuring, the quality of life of older adults. We've had over four hundred and fifty unduplicated participants come through there. An average of over sixty-five individuals just from DeKalb come every month, or every other month, excuse me, for the Northern Illinois food pantry, senior food pantry for sixty and over. That's critical for getting food, and we're looking forward to extending that to every month as well, to make sure that folks have nutritious food in their homes. We've partnered with the DeKalb County Community Gardens in making sure we have low-cost snacks and other things available that's helped us offset costs by partnering with them to help provide nutrition as well. We also have different activities going on throughout the year. We've had our lie heap services available. Once a year, lie heap comes on over, and we have about a hundred individuals walk through the doors just to sign up to receive services. We also have a Parkinson's Support Group meeting regularly, partnerships with Northwestern Medicine for advanced care presentations, and partnerships with other area organizations for things such as fall prevention, understanding long-term care, scams to avoid things like identity theft. We work with NIU and the nursing students for regular blood pressure checkups, and any other type things that might come up that we say, hey, I might want to mention this to your doctor. We also partner with Triad and are a founding member of Triad, and work to having different types of activities available for the community, such as a safety car drive. We work with Kish Community College in providing a safety car checkup. So next time they go to their car person, they can say, hey, I need you to look at XYZ. We've also had Illinois Secretary of State, as well as ARP, come in to provide driver's courses. These are huge. Last time we had one, I was fortunate to be over at the site, and one of the gentlemen said, thank you so much for doing this. I wouldn't know where else to go to get this. This is very valuable and wouldn't be able to succeed without us. So thank you, is what he said. We also have a variety of physical and social activities for participants and have a well-rounded experience for whatever they may enjoy. So we work on things such as Tai Chi for body movement and as well as balance, chair yoga for those who might not be as flexible to be able to get down on the floor but still need the flexibility for joint mobility, as well as things such as low-impact exercise to continue to work on the muscles and for strength. Our partnerships with the agencies throughout the area have been vital to us as well in providing a really well-rounded service. We have partners with VAC and elder care that are imperative. Because of that, and because of the funding and our partnerships, we've been able to work with individuals every day. We have formed these relationships with individuals who therefore then trust us and come to us and say, what do I do? Where do I go? And then we can say, let's call VAC. Let's call elder care. They're the next step, and that is vital and important to everyone because they trust us. And therefore, then, we can give sound referrals that they know that because we've done our research, they feel comfortable in going to them. And many seniors in our county go out without meals. And because of our partnership with VAC in providing lunches, we're able to make sure that at least one meal a day is cared for, and we're making sure that they have a nutritious meal as well. And we're looking for, too, as always, through the continuation of this year, to provide those services and even more, as we look to help individuals fulfill a purposeful life and that as they start to become retired and feel that they may be missing something. We look for having more additional community opportunities through volunteerism and intergenerational engagement through mentoring and other aspects of working with youth. We're very excited for the next year. There's always something fun happening over there. It's always an enjoyable day, and you never go away without a smile, which is always a wonderful time. So thank you so much for your generosity. We truly do appreciate it, and we truly appreciate our partnership with the city. It has been a tremendous partnership that we've had for many, many years, and we look forward to it continuing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin, for your report. Any comments or questions for any of our council members? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, so we move to the consent agenda. Item G on your agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are enacted in one motion unless requested by a council member that we do remove one of the items from consent. The five items on our consent agenda tonight: minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 11, 2019; minutes of the committee of the hall meeting of March 25, 2019. That was number two. Number three, minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 25, 2019. Number four, minutes of the special city council meeting of April 3, 2019. And five, accounts payable and payroll through April 8, 2019, in the amount of $2,482,883.61. And entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Stupija. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Finoukhan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That motion passes. The consent agenda is approved as read. There are no public hearings for this evening. Let's move on to considerations. Number one is a status report on general fund reserve projections. Prior to our city manager, Bill Nicholas, speaking, this item. We do have one individual who would like to speak to that, and that is our former mayor, Bessie Chronopoulos.
Good evening. Spring is finally here, I think.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing Avril Schreiber. Indeed, this community was very, very fortunate to have her at the helm of Barb City Manor. What a wonderful job she did. She will be missed. Wonderful, wonderful woman. Thank you, Mayor. I have some concerns, as all of you do, it's nothing new, about the budget. That is, as far as I can see, and I know as far as you can see, pretty much a top priority for you. I would urge you to wait until you get more information from an audit. I would also urge you to strongly consider engaging the FAC and doing a little bit more in-depth studies until the audit comes forward. There's some things that they can do to investigate certain line items and so on and so forth, so they can advise the council on some specifics. I really would maybe even have you strongly consider not doing very much hiring unless absolutely necessary until you get some things taken care of with the budget, particularly the transfers over the years that have been done. You need some clarification on that before you proceed too rapidly. That's my two cents for, you know, at this point in time, so.
Does anybody up here have any problem hearing the speaker? Can everybody hear, Bessie? Okay, maybe it's just my ears. The sound in here isn't quite as loud as it usually is. Maybe it's just the cold that I have. I'm sorry. Okay, with that, Bill, Nicholas, our city manager, will have a status report on the general fund reserve projections.
Okay. I will agree with former mayor Chronopoulos. Whenever you're talking about the public budget, you need to have the best data available. We're getting to that point with respect to FY 18, and the audit will give us the sharpest numbers that we have to work on, will have to work on. But at this point, the audit is more than three-quarters done. We don't have a full draft, but we have some idea of where we're gonna end up officially at the end of FY 2018, and of course, for the people in the audience, our fiscal year goes with the calendar year. Alderman Jacobson asked us at the last meeting to give us a projection, so that's what I'm doing tonight, based on the best numbers that we have at hand. I will hasten to also add that as we look at where we're going to end up in FY 19, we don't really get a good look at that, and even then, it's kind of a hazy look until you're done with about the second quarter. That would be the end of June. So at this point, and I've talked to the Finance Advisory Committee about this, at this point, we're premature to engage anybody in predicting where we're gonna end up in FY 19. But to follow through on the request, we've done some very preliminary numbers for you to look at. I think in the broad contours of what I'm gonna discuss with you, the structural issue is still gonna be the same, although the numbers may be slightly different at the end of the year. So let me walk you through what was posted for the public's review as well on our website. And for the benefit of those of you who don't have a laptop with you, I printed out a chart which Assistant City Manager Ray Munch and I worked on, and I think with what we have to go on right now, it's the best we could provide. So where are we? If you look at that chart, you'll see, and Jeff, I don't know if Jeff can post that up. We set that aside for him. All right. You'll see what the, our best unaudited guess is at the FY 2018 actual year-end, and also where we stood in terms of our general fund reserve. And the council's policy, which is codified, is that we will have in reserve twenty-five percent of the annual general fund expenditures. And it will not be a surprise to you that our best guess for the year-end 2018, year-ending December 31, 2018, saw a general fund reserve that fell short of that twenty-five percent mark. We're at about 22.64 percent, based on the information we have. We had a deficit year-end. We're projecting the difference between our general fund revenues and expenditures of $861,451, and that contributed to it. The budget that this council passed on December 18 is in green, so that's the third column of numbers in. And that shows the hope that we would get somewhere close to that twenty-five percent threshold. And what I have in the background for you tonight, in the blue column, obviously, we haven't revised the 2019 budget, but if it were revised, if you chose to revise it tonight with the numbers we have, this is what it would show. Just a slight difference in the general fund revenue budget, but a significant downward revision to the general fund expenditure budget that reflects the management reductions of late January and early February. What does that mean? Well, if we were to spend every allocated dollar in the general fund as revised in that blue column by the end of the year, if we were to get every dollar that we project in terms of revenue at the end of that year, we would have a general fund reserve of about 26.6 percent. Hooray. Now, if we could take a snapshot of that and carry it forward.
Absolutely.
Work would be done. The news continues to be pretty good for the next year and a half after that, just based on the reductions that we have achieved. And assuming, of course, always in budgeting, you're assuming that there won't be some external threat that's gonna upset your projections of revenue, for instance, and that you will be very prudent and conservative in your spending. So assuming all of those things, as we look at FY 2020 and even into FY 2021, we're still seeing a reserve balance that is more than twenty-five percent of the projected general fund expenditures. But then, please regard this, and this will be grist, I think, for the strategic planning that we're gonna do at mid-year. Without any additional offsetting measures, either in terms of less expenditures or greater revenue, or a combination of the two, you can see that red line in the bottom, the line graph. Look what happens to the general fund reserve and the balance, that percentage target that we're looking for. It goes from projected at the end of FY 2019, 26.6 percent, just a slight bump up, maybe, if all goes well in 2020, to 27-plus percent, and then back down to a little under 26 percent, and then 22 percent, and then in 23, 14 percent. So a lot of work is ahead. And what is the structural bogey that we're fighting? This is not news to the council. It was highlighted by the Finance Advisory Committee last year in a number of meetings, joint meetings with the council and also their own committee meetings. It's the rampaging pension costs. That's no individual's fault. It's no union's fault. It's no management's fault. It is a commitment that we've made, and we're obligated to honor until or unless there is a different negotiated status. And so that's something we have to look at, and it's not just germane to us, it's germane to every small and medium-sized city in this state. And certainly, we don't have to say at any length, it's certainly the case with the state of Illinois. So that's where we are. I'm not, at this point, prepared to go into much more detail. There's still more to know about what the audit's gonna look like, but we're getting close. We should be able to present that in about a month. Is that correct, Ray?
Correct.
And then, that'll be pretty good timing. It'll give us about a month to prepare background for you, for the public to see and to parse in advance of some type of a retreat that the council has identified as a top priority. And probably in the next meeting or two, I'll propose some possible dates for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments or questions, Bill, on this progress report thus far? Thank you. Let's move forward now to J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2019-058, authorizing an eighteen-month agreement extension with competitive yard works for citywide landscape and cul-de-sac maintenance from July 1, 2019 through December 31, 2020. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. Do you want to speak to that, Bill, at all?
I should, probably, because.
Yeah, okay, please.
We brought this back with some additional information. The last meeting, we did not, I did not have the information to present to you concerning what portion of this contract deals with city-owned property, medians, and so forth. And so now, you had, as part of your background, and the public was able to view this as well. And so now you had as part of your background, and the public was able to view this as well, not only maps of each of the private subdivisions where there are cul-de-sacs, where there's mowing done by this company and then we're reimbursed by the SSA tax revenue. And then there are some areas of public property around the city, so actually a list of some seven places everywhere from the Pleasant Street Island on Fourteenth Street, which seemed like a good idea at the time, cost us money, Clifford, Gerler, Colby Court, West Taylor Street, South Fourth Street, Protonos and the South Endiclin Road Medians. So those are some of the public areas. We came back with the same contractual information that was provided to us through the recent bid process and we had recommended this to you. The, the proposal was for a two-year contract for forty thousand, twenty thousand each year, which is a savings from the, the last couple of years, but we're prepared to listen to any recommendation the council may have.
Any, yes, Alderman Fagan.
I'm going over this because some people have talked to me about the Heritage Ridge. And before I start with going into this contract, I want to say there's nothing against the current city management or the contractor himself, competitive yard works. Everybody's doing their work here, but our problem with, what I, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to continue it for one year rather than two. And let me go over some of the things here. When you look over our budget, we have revenue that's brought in by that Heritage Ridge of one thousand dollars. Now, they show that transferred out to contracted services of a thousand dollars under our budget with five hundred to the general fund. Now, under this agreement, it looks like it's cost us, now competitive yard works does not do any, well, let me go back again, it's for maintaining retention pond and retaining cul-de-sacs. Competitive yard works does the cul-de-sacs only, the retention pond, I believe, is supposed to be done by the city. That's one of the things that were brought up to me, that apparently there's a gentleman there that gets tired of waiting for the city and has been cutting all that retention pond for the last four years. He has a yard company, landscaping company, and apparently he's got the equipment to do it and he's been doing it. And I, and I've been approached by other people in the neighborhood. So, and then if you look at the expenses, it shows that, you know, with a thousand dollars transferred out to contracted services of five hundred to the general fund, it shows that we've got a deficit, the, the SSA's got a deficit of four hundred ninety dollars, which I don't think there is. Along with this is, you know, we've got a three-year contract, we want a five-year contract. I'd like to just go to a four-year contract, just go for one more year. The other thing, what scares me on this contract is, it's an old contract and it's a contract that should be updated. And our city attorney will know what I'm talking about here. What I'm talking about is under the general liability requirements, the limits of one million, two million. Most of our contractor, contracts go out with primary non-contributory with the waiver subrogation. I don't see any language for primary non-contributory on the GL. They've got a section for every section for the general liability, the business auto, everything, but the workers' comp. There's nothing in there for workers' comp. They tried to touch on it a little bit, a number six, but with the workers' comp, we should have some wording in there for the Koteke waiver and at least the employer's liability. And then there's, I looked in the old certificate and I know we offer, we asked for thirty-day notice of cancellation midterm and there was, we need to have all that on the certificates and there was nothing on that certificate back in two thousand and sixteen. So what I would like to do is like to amend this to a one-year contract, have the contract, have the contract cleaned up and then overall, I'd like to see it go back to the neighborhoods. Work that way, but right now, with time and everything like that, I'd like to just amend this to a one-year contract.
So the one-year contract would go from July one to June thirtieth of next year, two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
And my question is, and you're starting to lose me when you're talking in some of the insurance.
Right.
Parameters. But my question would be, if you want to clean this up, instead of going from two years to one, one year, why don't we just clean it up first?
If I can address that, Mayor?
Sure.
So the, the contract itself has some other requirements in it, but it also relates or refers to Exhibit E and requires compliance with Exhibit E. Subsection one of Exhibit E requires supervision of workers' compensation, unemployment, automobile and other legally required insurance. Subsection two requires that all policies named the city as additional primary insured with a waiver of right of subrogation and the thirty-day notice of cancellation. They're required to be kept in force for the full duration of the agreement with certificates of insurance provided. Subsection three talks about the one million, two million dollar coverage for CGL, Comprehensive General Liability. Subsection four talks about the automobile insurance, again, that same level of coverage. And subsection six has the Koteke waiver language in it that.
Where is this, which, which one are you on?
Exhibit E, so it would be pages, starts at page forty-one, forty-two, forty-one and forty-two of the Yard Works Agreement.
Okay, I'm trying to get to it here.
So if you, if you look at the actual agreement, when you get to the end with the signature page, go to the next page, which is.
This is Exhibit E, insurance requirements?
Yes.
That, okay, that to me is page nineteen.
I believe that is in keeping with our current approaches to these agreements and it covers each of the issues that you referenced.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, yeah, I got it, right here. Yep, okay. So, well, you got automobile, professional, comprehensive general liability, under the Under the comprehensive general liability, you say that there says primary non-contributory in here?
In section two of Exhibit E, unless otherwise indicated, any certificate shall further indicate the city's additional primary insured on each such policy of insurance and shall indicate that such policy shall not have any right of subrogation against the city or the city's insurers. And it goes on to.
Two E?
Two E, E two, I should say.
All right, all right, you've got that. But under the Exhibit E, there's nothing that, except for the indemnification, that it just touches on workers' compensation.
E one requires supervision of workers' compensation in accordance with applicable laws.
And under what employer's liability?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
The employer's liability limit?
Oh, it's the statutory coverage that'd be required. So we don't require anything in addition to the, the coverage that's required by law for either workers' compensation or unemployment. And that would be consistent across all of our independent contractor agreements.
Okay.
And the Koteke waiver is in E six.
Is in E six. All right. I, I mean, I, I don't normally see it written this way, but all right, I see it. All right. Well, still, I like to go to a one-year to see where we're at with this, you know, see what we can do. I mean, it's, there's a lot of money going out there that's out of the subdivision that's, seems that they're paying more unless I'm not picking something else up there.
So are you moving to amend this resolution from eighteen months to twelve months?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we amend this resolution as requested. Any further discussion on that? Alderman Fanouken.
I thought part of the process here was we were also going to try and align it with our fiscal year rather than having the contract in mid-year as you're now suggesting it would happen. And I think that was the intent of going to the eighteen months.
Precisely.
Rather than just the twelve. And I can see a lot of benefit in it coinciding with the calendar year.
So I would make amendment for it to be a contract through.
December thirty first, probably.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Within its six months. It's either six months or twenty-four months.
No, six or eighteen.
Or six or eighteen.
Mayor, may I? Mayor, I second Alderman Fanouken's suggestion because it is important to align with our fiscal year, but practically speaking, there are people that are going to be out there mowing next week or this week, so cleaning up and so forth, I think it'd be better if we just went to the end of the calendar year and just finished this year, do a six-month contract and then that gives us some time through the winter to nail this down, go to bid with a, with a packet that is going to be comprehensive. And also look out for some of these, investigate some of these things that Alderman Fagan has, has brought up tonight.
Well, if we pass this, I'm presuming then that that, we are presuming that that would be fine with the, with the vendor. Six months, I mean, he signed an eighteen month, as I see, and now we're going to a six month. If he's comfortable with that, we'll see how this vote goes. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we amend this resolution authorizing a six-month agreement extension with competitive yard works. Any further discussion?
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
No.
Favor?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
No.
Stupija?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't believe you should have voted in this case.
You called for me. I knew I didn't have to vote, but you called for me, Lynn. When I hear my name called like that, I'm going to vote.
I withdraw my name call.
Well, I mean, you know how I feel now, I would, that's no, that's not a problem. It had failed prior to coming to me. So that, that resolution or that amendment calling for a six-month agreement extension, may we vote now on the original resolution, the eighteen month, which again aligns itself with that calendar year, not the fiscal year?
No, actually, Mayor, it does align with both the calendar and fiscal year.
Yes, right, right. I beg your pardon, yes, that's right. Thank you. The old fiscal year, right. All right. Roll call, please.
Norrico?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Motion passes, thank you. Number two, Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash zero six two, authorizing a revised social services agreement for University Village. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Favor. We do have two individuals who would like to speak to this prior to getting some further explanation from City Manager Nicholas, Lynette Spencer and Dan Kenny, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to offer my gratitude to the council for reviewing the revised contract and your commitment to the University Village residents and also a gratitude, a great deal of gratitude to Joanne and Bill and Dean for helping us revise this and pull this all together for tonight's council meeting. The University Village Collaborative is a unique partnership that is community-wide. It serves the University Village residents and the surrounding areas through social services, the local city government, the apartment management, NIU and the faith community as well as other community groups who are contributing to the collaborative, collaborative as well as the University Village residents themselves. And so I think this is something that's very unique and it offers a wide spectrum of services right on site to the village and something that our community is doing really well. We are offering weekly, monthly and quarterly interventions to the village residents and intentionally and effectively addressing the barriers that they face day in and day out alongside the efforts, parallel efforts, to address the underlying causes of poverty and the other challenges that they're facing. Going forward, we know that as we grow our services there, the need for funding will also grow, which would not be sustainable just in and of itself with the city's efforts here. And so the collaborative is planning a funding, sort of a forum to come together in the next several months of the local communities' funding sources and trying to make sure that we have commitment from the stakeholders in the community who can provide funding, such as the mental health board, the community mental health board, the community foundation and other private and local, local private donors. So I just, again, want to thank you for your time and, and your efforts in making this collaborative come together and I'll turn it over to Dan for more specifics on, in terms of the services that we're providing.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. We have several different entities from the county that are working with us on this collaborative to deliver services at University Village. I want to mention four Cs. They are monitoring for the need for childcare by monitoring the existing daycare facilities in the neighborhood. Also, there's the DeKalb County Health Department, which, all of these entities that I'm talking about attend our monthly meetings, by the way, so that we have good networking and collaboration and communication between each other. DeKalb County Health Department delivers WIC services as well as adult immunizations. They also help with insurance enrollment assistance and provide free flu shots. The Work Net has been there on a monthly basis as well. They have job fairs, they use the computer banks to provide resume services and things like that to help individuals get jobs. DeKalb County Community Gardens has installed ten gardens in the past, at the University Village, as well as two more will be installed in two thousand and nineteen. We've employed two youth over the year and a half as participants in our Community Growers Program, which is a program to provide the youth with a stipend for job training, learning horticulture and agricultural skills through gardening. We also have our mobile pantry, which sets up, sets up there at least once a month, sometimes more than once a month. We've served over five thousand households just in the University Village and surrounding area during that time and served over seventeen hundred individuals. I also wanted to give, mention that we are working collaboratively also with the YMCA and Camp Power so that the individuals to participate in the Adventure Works, Venture U program, the after-school program that they have there can then flow into Camp Power and at the end of the summer flow back into the after-school program and we hope to see that, those numbers grow over the near future. And I also wanted to mention the management. The new management that took over at University Village deserves a shout-out. I wanted to tell you that I've worked at University Village, putting in gardens there before the new management took over and since the new management has taken over, they have been very cooperative and collaborative. Representative Fund Management attends our monthly collaborative meetings for social services. They've made the new community center available for many different events as well as our meetings, as well as our grow mobile, mobile pantries. And I think they've been doing a good job with security, but Mr. Lowry confirmed that. But I know there's been a lot of changes and positive. meetings, as well as our Grow Mobile, mobile pantries, and I think they've been doing a good job with security, but Mr. Lowry confirmed that, but I know there's been a lot of changes in a positive way there. I've been involved in working in University Village and in the neighborhood now for almost seven years, and this is the most hopeful that I've been during that time, so I think we are on a good path, so thank you.
Good, and I think a number of us join you in that, in that hope, Dan, and, and what we see, but let me turn this over to our City Manager, Bill Nicholas, who may have some additional thoughts on this.
I do, and I guess if I were to say nothing else, I would say that compared to the work of Joanne Rouse, who's been a great teacher for me in trying to understand the past year or so, Lynette and to Dan, I want to say that compared to their work, I feel very unworthy. Let me just tell you what has happened in the last year. The original contract and, and agreement that was forged here in the council chambers about this time in 2018, never really came to fruition. But a number of agencies, as Dan was enumerating them, including Adventure Works and Community Gardens, kept plunging away without any certainty that they would be reimbursed, and through the end of 2018, working in collaboration with Kewalki College, Illinois WorkNet, 4C, the County Health Department, Camp Power, our Police Department, a whole lot of agencies in there trying to give direct services to residents, they were able to achieve a lot of good things. And so this, what's before you tonight, and I'll be brief, are two things. One is the amendment to the University Village Agreement, and this is a new collaboration, as Lynette described, and that will carry us into the next year. They're looking for a year, and then we'll be reviewing this for the council and let you know how well things went. But also, there's, there's services that were rendered, extraordinary services rendered without any hope of recompense, but we've asked for invoices, and so we have 40, excuse me, $47,608 for 2019 for all of the agencies, but most particularly Community Gardens and Adventure Works, which we would like you to know we're approving with this act, if you so approve. So I highly recommend your support and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think the background material and the explanation did a nice job of saying why we're revising this agreement or proposing this revision, but with that, let's turn it over to any questions or comments. Alderman Noriko?
On behalf of the community, I want to thank Adventure Works and Community Gardens for stepping up. It's hard to work on a startup, particularly when it falters, and you certainly put the needs of the community above those of your own groups, and, you know, it's rare to see that, and this council member certainly very much appreciates that, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson?
Just trying to get an understanding of, obviously, when FSA backed out, were they provided any funding from that original 200,000?
Go ahead.
Yes, FSA was provided preliminary funding. They did complete some of their coordination services, but a very limited amount. We're currently having discussions with them regarding whether it's appropriate for a refund. I think the total amount that was funded was just several thousand dollars, and we're working through that with them at present.
My only other thing that jumped out at me here, and again, I appreciate the agencies coming together, especially in the neighborhood that may not be the first ward, but certainly is part of the first ward neighborhood in University Village, is the cost of purchasing a new phone at $800. I think, again, we have very limited funds in these accounts, and I think we have to be extremely careful on how we spend them going forward, especially when looking at this year, we're already over budget. I think there are several other more cost-effective means that would be long-term, and I'd ask them to try to scale that back some, both their phone service and the purchase of a brand-new $800 phone. That would be obviously a one-time expense, but a pretty large one. Overall, I think the discussion next year is going to be, how do we get that back in line with the budget that we were provided from security properties? And I think that's going to be, obviously, a difficult discussion when you're talking significantly over budget this year, but we have the funds up front, we have the opportunity to get this program now off the ground in year two and really start firing on all cylinders, and I think the council next year will have the opportunity to look and evaluate the progress and the positives that the program, as outlined in the collaborative plan, is providing, and find a way to fund it next year.
Thank you, David. Any further comments? We have a resolution before us, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, thank you. Number three, Resolution 2019-063, authorizing an amendment to a communications site lease agreement with T-Mobile Central LLC for 240 additional square feet of land for the purpose of installing a generator and supporting equipment at the city's North Water Tower, located at 900 West Dresser Road. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
As you said in the title, Mayor, T-Mobile wants to install a generator and some supporting equipment at the base of the tower, that's all good for us, it'll help maintain the reliability, but we saw an opportunity to make a few more bucks a month, and we negotiated a $200 a month increase, that's what's before you tonight.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number four, Resolution 2019-064, authorizing the City Manager to submit a letter of intent to participate in a grant opportunity with the Illinois Board of Higher Education to fund three Northern Illinois University work-study interns between January 1, 2020, and August 31, 2020, and commit to 15,000 in the FY 2020 budget as matching funds. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been all, moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Noriko. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, as you can see, the main reason for this is the difference between our fiscal year and that of NIU, so what we're asking the council to do is to basically vote in favor of a claim on the 2020 budget. I don't know if this is truly paying it forward, but we'd be paying it in FY 2020, and that's, that's the unique part of this. The idea is to place one of the interns at the airport and another with our community development staff, and a third with our human resources office. It's, it's a service that we have provided interns for a while now, and we're in the backyard, it's a good opportunity for a limited number of graduate students to work.
Any comments? Roll call.
Question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Joyce, yes.
I'm just curious, as a question, how many interns do we generally hire per year?
I'll let our Assistant City Manager talk about that.
So on a regular basis, historically, we've employed two management interns in the City Manager's Office, those are graduate-level interns. In addition to that, we have, over the past about 18 months, employed these grant-funded interns, those are typically undergraduate interns, and as the manager said, they've been in human resources, community development, the airport. Additionally, the fire department has occasionally had an undergraduate intern, and we've utilized some interns to do GIS programming. So at any given time, I would say the city has anywhere from two to six interns on staff.
Okay, thank you. Is there a need, perhaps, to hire more in the future? Do we know, or you don't know until the year is present, presented itself?
It's, it's a good question. Sometimes it isn't our need, it's our collaboration with NIU and the opportunities it provides people who are trying to see if they have a career in public service and municipal government. So we're building future leaders, and it doesn't come at a great cost, but it does come at a cost, and when you add it all together, it adds up to a number that might be a full-time position, but we've, the council has supported the idea of helping.
Yeah, since I've been aboard, Alderman Stupija, our interns have provided invaluable service. For what we are paying and for what we are receiving, incredible. And I must say that when I work with some of the interns, they invigorate me because of their youthful vigor, their enthusiasm, and more than that, more than anything, their knowledge coming out and working with us in specific areas, so that's my two cents. Alderman Jacobson?
I just wanted to continue by saying that I think this is an excellent program, and I would like to see it, you know, flourish even more than it has.
Hmm, good. Alderman Jacobson?
I would like to second that, that was going to be my comment, that even, again, even if they add up to what one full-time employee would be, again, you're talking 60, 80-plus hours a week that we're getting for that one salary and no benefits, being that we are so close to NIU and having that resource in our town, I've always advocated for more interns. Again, these are the people doing a lot of the grunt work in City Hall, in reality, and a lot of the research, and a lot of the, the things that help our professional staff get done with projects, get through some of the stuff we see, get through a lot of those, the backup that especially helps us make the decisions we make, and again, at the value of what we get from those employees, and providing them both a leg up in their career and the knowledge and experience to be in the City Hall, I don't think we can get a better value for our money, especially if some of it is grant-match, and I would love to see what other options we have at bringing in more interns, being that they're right up the street and that they are the best bang-for-the-buck we can get in terms of several of those positions.
Yeah, that's for sure, and, you know, the fact that NIU is not only endorsing, but, but continuing to encourage additional intern opportunities. Here we have the Illinois Board of Education, a grant program, so I think what, Joyce, what you are hoping for, and what David, you have seen over your eight years here on the City Council, I think speaks volumes for the entire arena of student interns. So we do have a motion on the floor, a second, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number five, Resolution 2019-065, authorizing the staffing of one administrative assistant position and one account technician-one position. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Noriko. Once again, City Manager Bill Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. These are longstanding, full-time positions with benefits, and in each case, we have had very dedicated people working in these positions. Start with the administrative assistant for the fire department, some of you know Tracy Lemay, who's worked for more than 20 years. She has done a lot of things. Jeff McMaster would take a considerable amount of time telling you all the things that she does in the course of the day, both within and outside of her job description. What we're proposing, she has decided to retire, her last day will be May 22. We are looking to replace that position with a new position, or a new person who is going to come in at a lower salary range, so there'll be some savings here, it'll still remain a full-time position with benefits. The other position is currently held by Pat Highland, many of you have known her, she is an account technician-three, she is an ASME employee, she works in the finance department, she does water billing, but she's done a lot of different things over the years, great employee, she's also decided to retire, and once again, it is our plan to fill this position as an account technician-one at a lower entry-level pay, level pay, and this would be still a collectively bargained full-time position with benefits. In both cases, these are holes that we need to fill, so we recommend your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I've been very clear over the last several years, these are the positions we should start to fill with part-timers. The reality of providing long-term pensions to, again, entry-level employees that could be here 25 or 30 years, while that's great, the reality in our City Hall, starting salaries has changed so significantly that these are the opportunities, as people retire, that we can bring in two 25-hour-a-week positions that will more than fill the hours to get the job done without the long-term benefit and pension costs.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Motion passes, thank you. Number six, Resolution 2019-066, authorizing an architectural improvement program, economic incentive grant in the amount of $750 for the property located at 248 East Lincoln Highway in DeKalb, that's Chilton's Sporting Goods. Motion, please.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Stupija. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that had come in possibly in January and fell to me to pick up and carry through to this level, and the, the grant is pretty straightforward. The main entrance to Chilton Sporting Goods is an old wooden patio door that is anything but handicap-accessible. They proposed, they've got a couple of proposals that would replace this, this heavier door with a modern metal-framed insulated glass window with proper closers and so forth. The, the lowest price is, for the whole replacement, is 1,500. Our program allows for up to 50% in the architectural improvement program, which is a TIF-funded program, for ADA-based projects. The, I was asked, and I'm forwarding to you the request on the part of the owners for a full support for this particular grant, and I will defer to your wishes on that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item K, ordinances, second reading, there are none this evening. Let's go to item L, ordinances, first reading. Number one, ordinance 2019-032, approving a special use permit for an amusement establishment, indoor sports sim- indoor sports simulation facility at 1504 Sycamore Road. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Favor. And Bill Nicholas, if you would address this item, please.
Just, the council is well aware of this project.
We've looked at it before.
Yeah, and so, in the due diligence, first, the council had to approve an amendment to the liquor code to allow for indoor sports simulation facilities and to license them for the purchase, the sale of alcoholic beverages. The next step was to, for the owner to submit some building, detailed building plans, a site plan, to meet the requirements of a special use permit. Those submittals were received, reviewed by staff. The submittals were taken to the Plan Commission on March twentieth, and the Plan Commission voted five to one in favor of the special use permit with a couple of conditions. This is typical with a special use permit. One pertained to the trash dumpster, which they felt needed to be fully enclosed within sixty days of the approval of the permit. Landscaping, which is detailed in your background. And then, the number of parking spaces had to be documented on the site plan as building permits are processed for this particular project. With those conditions, Plan Commission supported this and recommended your approval, and we recommend your approval of the Plan Commission recommendation.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I just want to make completely clear. I've heard, both in news articles and in radio broadcasts, that the city has approved this site for video gambling licenses. That is not part of the special use, and we have not taken that up and given any direction on that yet, correct?
I'm not aware of that. Dan Olson, Principal Plan, have you heard of him?
No, the five video gaming machines are the accessory use to the principal use, which is the indoor golf simulator. So, it's not a, the typical, what we've seen in terms of video gaming establishment per our code, in terms of the definition. It's an accessory use to the indoor simulators. It's not a primary use.
But we have not yet taken up that discussion. That will come back as a separate discussion.
That's correct.
It's not a separate special use, it'd be a separate license, but not a special.
Correct. The license will come back in front of council to decide.
Right.
It has not been granted. It has not been approved.
Correct.
It is not something the council has weighed in on at all at this point.
No.
So, again, I don't know if the clarification was in some of the media articles, the newspaper articles I read, or coming from elsewhere, but I wanted to make clear.
They weren't coming from our staff, sir.
That we have not yet approved that, and that will be a separate discussion.
Yeah, we're voting on the special use permit.
Yes, I do.
And this is a first reading. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we waive second reading and approve.
Could I have a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading on this ordinance request and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call. Alderman Noriko?
I thought typically that was done when there was unanimous approval by the Planning Commission.
It requires a supermajority without, correct?
It requires a supermajority either way.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Noriko?
So, in other words, typically, we've looked for the unanimous approval, but it isn't absolute?
That is correct. When there's unanimous approval from the, or unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, then we always present a positive staff recommendation for waiver of second reading. But it is not a requirement or condition precedent the council can choose to waive it, even without.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Ordinance is approved. Number two, Ordinance 2019-033, amending the FY 2019 budget and authorizing the purchase and equipment of one police vehicle based on the Illinois Central Management Services contract pricing in an amount not to exceed $55,000. Ro, excuse me. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved by Alderman Stapiga, seconded by Alderman Favor, and City Manager Nicholas once again.
As the background states, Mayor, this is a matter that requires both approval of a vehicle purchase from the restitution funds and also a budget amendment. The particular squad in question has been detailed in your background. It's a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria. It's got a little over four hundred forty-eight thousand miles, and the police department feels it's at the end of its serviceable life as a police squad car. It could have other uses, but they do not feel at this point that it is worth investing in further repair. Repairs to date have cost a little over $30,000 for this particular vehicle. They have looked and asked for pricing on a replacement. There is a, just a stripped-down version of a Crown, of a replacement vehicle for $30,274, but as you can see in the background, there's another estimated $24,000. It goes into the upfitting, all the equipment that goes into the police vehicle. And so, what we are proposing here, the purchase and the options and the equipment that are required, combined to about $55,000. In your background, there's a little chart that shows what we would have to do to the budget if you were so inclined to approve this, and we do recommend your approval.
And because this item does involve a budget amendment, it does require a two-thirds supermajority vote. Alderman Finuchin?
Just a simple question for the chief, if I may. Chief, you're replacing a squad car with a sport utility vehicle. Why not another squad car?
The serviceability records on the Ford Explorer utilities far outweigh the interceptors, and they're actually comparable with everything else, such as mileage and that. It also uniforms our fleet to the extent, cages in the back, the way the MDT, your mobile data browser, is mounted in the car has a certain type of mount that's consistent in every vehicle. You begin to lay each vehicle out, so no matter what vehicle a police officer gets into, they understand where the button is to release the this or that, or access the MDT. It also sets the groundwork for down the road to start to evaluate some of the Ford Explorer hybrids that are just coming out into the market.
Right, thanks, chief.
Alderman Jacobson?
We've had this discussion before, and it's frustrating to buy a vehicle that we have to equip for almost the same cost as the vehicle. And again, I think that's where the opportunity to go out into the market and buy pre-equipped vehicles, even if they're thirty or forty-thousand-mile vehicles, is significant. Again, not only do we save the depreciation and save the cost, yes, we lose some years of serviceability, but when you're talking a single vehicle's $55,000, you could buy three used for that same price and far outlasts the life, at ten-year life cycles, of a single vehicle. And again, these are the things that we keep doing over and over because we need to replace the fleet. We need a comprehensive look at going out and doing things differently. We have, again, the opportunity that we have a used police car supplier in our neighboring town that offers some great deals on their vehicles pre-equipped, especially when they're coming in with the light packages, with the pushbars, with the option for mobile data browsers, that saves us tens of thousands of dollars to explore those things. Again, we have to start doing things differently, long-term, to provide the vehicles that we need on the streets. At $55,000 apiece, we can't ever catch up with our fleet needs.
Alderman Finuchin?
Dave, if we're a vehicle other than a police vehicle, I would agree with you. But if you look at it as we go now with a ten- or eleven-year cycle of how we've been doing, it's only $5,000 a year. The new police vehicles are better built, and I think that to go into a used police vehicle could create a lot of other problems.
Alderman Stapiga?
I have to go along with Alderman. I believe also that the use on a police vehicle, sometimes the car itself is constantly running, totally different than, you know, the average, the average car. So, I just go along with the chief's advice.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interject some information?
Yes.
So, there was a pretty good discussion at the Citizens Environmental Commission last week about hybrid vehicles and this next purchase. And as you all know from following the market news, the major manufacturers are, have been inching, I mean, literally inching, their way toward reliable hybrid vehicles. And maybe we're not there yet, but I heard a report on NPR about a week ago that they're probably within about a year or so, maybe two years of the idealized, ready-to-go-on-the-market hybrid vehicle. And as the chief said, this does set us up. This is the latest in the evolution of the Ford package, so we're hoping that it actually does bring us savings in terms of operation and durability.
Chief Lowery?
Just a couple of comments in general. First, Alderman Jacobson. As an example, there's certain police equipment in those vehicles that has to be geared towards the standing equipment in the police station itself, such as the arbitrator video system. There can't be other mixes and matches in the system. So, we're pretty limited, when it goes to equipping vehicles, about the type of mobile data browser we're using and the type of video camera. I also agree with the other aldermen as stated, the benefits of getting a new vehicle overused, it's not simply a monetary decision. It is, I guess, at the beginning, but the outpour of funding to repair vehicles far exceeds the value of going on a used vehicle on the up-front for a police vehicle. This will be the fourteenth squad car that we've purchased, since I've been here, that we've used asset forfeiture funds to do. That means not one penny of city money goes into any of these vehicles. And if it wasn't for us using that to purchase well-equipped new vehicles, we wouldn't be able to sustain these vehicles for the time and the abuse that we put on them. Alderman Stapiga correctly noted, these are 24/7 vehicles, and they're driven almost entirely within the city of DeKalb, which means they take a horrible beating with stop-and-go traffic and maintenance and that. So, I think the council is well on its way to reviewing this and looking at it from the perspective of the value of the new purchase as opposed to a used purchase.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson?
I appreciate many of those things, but in order to update the fleet and reduce the long-term maintenance costs on a lot of these vehicles, we can, for the same price, equip three to four vehicles that take those maintenance costs on other vehicles down. So, again, even if there was some slight upfront cost in changing the camera system involved in doing those things, you save the big upfront costs in some of the duty specs, in the pushbar, in the light bar packages, in the heavy-duty batteries and all those that run up those costs. I'd love to get you ten new vehicles, or even ten used vehicles to supplement out these 150,000-mile cars that are nickel-and-diming us to death.
Any further discussion? Alderman Fagan?
I can respect trying to save money, but I do have to say, back when I was a police officer, one year they decided to do something differently, and that is buy a fleet of vehicles that were not squad car-ready, thought of saving money. And it was a complete disaster. It really was. It was almost a joke with us that what we had to deal with, I mean, these squad cars are made to run 24/7. They're not like the car that you and I go out and buy, David. And, but, you know, then again, buying a two-year-old car is just that. I mean, there's a reason why it's there two years later, after two years of use. A hundred percent of those vehicles are not going to be worth us to buy those. A lot of those have problems, and that's why they're out there for sale. We can't, we can't skip on the public safety of the city and to, well, all I'm going to say is, I'm going to vote for this vehicle. It's purchased by the right money, and I think it needs to be done.
Any further discussion? Again, since this ordinance would require a budget amendment, it will require a two-thirds vote. We have six votes up here, which would mean that we would need four votes. Is that correct? Dean?
It would require a two-thirds supermajority vote of the members of council then holding office. It requires six of eight, or six even of seven.
So, it needs six votes?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Do we need to move ahead on a second reading?
A waiver of second reading?
That's why I'd like to make the motion to waive second reading and approve, to move ahead with this purchase.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. We move now to reports at Communications. I'd ask each of the council members to see if they have anything to report. I'll start with our first ward alderman, David Jacobson.
Not this evening, thank you.
What was that, David?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
No report, okay. Alderman Finuchin?
No report this evening.
Alderman Stapiga?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
I'd like to just say very, very quickly, we have one alderman who's sitting up here tonight who has eight council meetings of service, or will have, after our final meeting in April. Joyce, I can't thank you enough for stepping up and being a part of this team for that short period of time. Really, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the privilege.
Okay. And we have another member up here who has been here for eight, count them, eight years of service, and that's David Jacobson. And Dave, we will thank you appropriately during your last meeting. But again, I, I cannot thank you guys enough for the service. And I see Scott and Carolyn and Tracy are three new to be sworn in city councilmen. I think you're going to enjoy this experience. I'm certainly going to enjoy working with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You've forgotten an individual sitting to your immediate left.
Yes, I have, I was, I was going to mention that, Bill. And, and what I, well, you took the words out of my mouth. I was going to ask if there's any comment prior to my throwing it over to, to our other reports. And you know, one person always has had a comment. Alderman, no, Kate Noriko, again, you served four years, is that correct? Four years on our council. We appreciate your service, and again, we'll have an appropriate gesture of our appreciation at our last meeting, okay? With that, I will ask City Clerk Lynn Fizikas if you have anything to report.
I do.
I do. I am wanting to get some public input on a potential project. Just to introduce it, I do, I do read the municipal code all the time, and so I know that some of the code is longer than other pieces of it. So intoxicating liquors code is 55 pages long. The sign code is 18 pages long. The ethics code is two pages long. In short, it's something that could be beefed up. And what I would like to do is to invite anyone who is interested in this topic, who has ideas, who would maybe like to participate in a proposal for beefing up the ethics ordinance to get in touch with me.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else to report? City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
Anybody else along the row? Nobody else? Okay. I'd like to now entertain a motion to move into executive session for these items. Number one, approval to hold an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C1. And number two, to hold an executive session to discuss security procedures as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C8. And number three, to hold an executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C11. I'd ask for a motion to hold an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
We will now recess into executive session. Thank you.